Welcome to this afternoon's work session. And we will open by asking if there's any item that the, any board members would like to take that's on their agenda for next week.
Uh, well, I do have a question regarding the transportation for seniors. I think that's number, hold on here, someplace. Number seven and number eight.
Ms. Rogers.
Well, and something was explained to us before. Oh, I talked with Tori and all, but I want to make sure this is the same concept and the same plan that they're using.
Okay, yes ma'am. Good afternoon Chairman, Commissioners. So we brought before you all last month the actual purchase for the emergency transportation. And what we're bringing back to you are the agreements for that purchase, just to make sure they're into the minutes to make the contracts valid.
Okay.
Yes.
Great.
Any others? Thank you ma'am. Any other items?
All right, we'll start off our work session discussion items first with MARTA Q4 Quarterly Briefing. Mr. Greenwood, good to see you.
Good afternoon everyone. Chairman Turner, Commissioners, good to see you all. This is MARTA's Q4 year end, so that's why we've got the Festivus logo up there with our signature llama. I'll just launch right into it. Our agenda is rather typical, operations updates and then getting into the 2040 capital expansion program. I also want to just recognize our board members, Katie Powers and Valencia Williamson, listening remotely. And the first thing we're going to get into is the operations updates. And the first of course is our typical chart that just talks about our monthly ridership by mode. Really not a lot to say here, except you know, it's the year end and every quarter that I come through, I'm expecting that I may have to explain a ridership dip, but the year has ended very solidly. We have not yet had a quarter over quarter dip. So we continue to, in every one of those modes, you can see in our bus rail, mobility and streetcar modes, they've all finished the year at the highest point since that precipitous drop post COVID. So that's a good sign. All the things that we're doing internally to take advantage of the opportunities and build ridership are happening, however slowly, it's consistent with what's happening across the country. In terms of the capital expansion, we'll start with those things that are near and dear to all of our commuters' hearts, which is the bus shelters and amenities update. You will recall that we've, we made the commitment that every year since FY20, we would come at you with 30 amenities per year. There were some years that, in particular FY21, that we fell woefully short. We have learned through the process. So our contractors have brought on all kinds of additional resources and we have worked with GDOT and our other partners to streamline the permitting process. So in FY23, you see we hit the 30. And in order to meet that commitment of 150 amenities over the five-year period, we need to bring in 57 amenities this fiscal year. No doubt in my mind that we will do that. And in fact, 18 of those are already under construction, three in permitting, permitting 35 in design and one already installed. And what I will say about the majority of the balance of these amenities is there, it's, the shelters took a lot longer time, but the semi-seats and the benches are a lot quicker in terms of the permitting and design. So we will, no doubt in my mind that we will finish on time. And again, here's a typical picture of what that difference is. Talking earlier with some of the folks that are interested here in the theater about the importance of these shelters and, and I couldn't agree more. It, it looks like a simple solution, but there's more to it than that. It's protection from the elements, from the rain and from the heat. It's, it's a concrete surface underfoot, so you're not standing in a puddle. It's a, it's a bench, it's information signs, all sorts of things that, that this means for people. In this particular case, it's at Davidson Parkway and Davidson Circle East. It serves Royal Palms Inn, the Greater Church of Atlanta and local businesses. And we currently have 30 boardings per day at this location. Just an example of the kind of collaboration that MARTA enjoys with Clayton County, where Commissioner Hambrick identified the safety concern at this, this stop along Highway 138 and Riverdale. And we addressed that quickly by relocating the stop and allowing patrons to wait further back from the street away from the barricade shown. So again, it's, it's an example of, you know, the, those physical things that MARTA may not see right away, but because Clayton County representatives are engaged with their constituents and have a voice with MARTA and a relationship, we're able to react, we're able to react quickly and make these adjustments as we go. The Justice Center Transit Hub, a nice update there too. We are progressing final design on the Justice Center Transit Hub. Final design is expected to be completed by Q3 2024. We heard the feedback on safety and aesthetic boundaries between the hub and the jail visitation area. And so as shown in the rendering, on the below rendering, we, we're extending that fence and landscaping to cover the entire parking lot that serves as a buffer between the two facilities. And MARTA of course is installing and maintaining cameras at the hub and we will share full access with the sheriff's office. Project completion is listed there as 2026. The multi-purpose operations and maintenance facility, again demolition plans have been completed in preparation for an anticipated demo starting in the spring. And a new rendering of the planned facility is, is shown here. So again, the, the existing property, we've achieved the ability to go into condemnation. And so again, that demolition will begin and enable us to project that completion coming in at the end of 2026. And then the South Lake BRT, a nice update there. The, you know, as you know, whenever we try to get a, a project in through the federal government, the capital investment grant program requires that we compete with other projects nationally. And one of the things that allows us to compete, one of the criteria that they give us is connection to jobs. And so we believe that Clayton County should leverage that, that advantage that you have in having the airport, which is 58,000 jobs and, and the busiest airport in the world. So we've made some adjustments and have been bringing this to our representatives to talk about the benefits of, of having a direct connection to the airport, to the airport station. So we've hired an engineering firm to study the feasibility of this connection. And you can see the original alignment in gold and then you can see in orange, the, the two potential options that we're looking at to give us direct connection into the airport. So that adjusted route will travel on an aerial ramp alongside the Skytrain and, and at an elevated platform whereby customers could either transfer onto the heavy rail system or into the terminal. So when you think about that, you know, that, that sudden access from Clayton County into a 58,000 job facility and never mind just for work, but for travel, given Clayton County premium access to the world's busiest airport, we were just very excited at, at the possibilities that this, that this brings. Here's a, a view on the left side, you can see, get a sense of what it'll look and feel like. With the left, you'll see the rapid on the aerial ramp and on the right, you'll see the rapid operating in its own lane in the center of Riverdale Road. So again, these segments have no POV, have no traffic, nothing to reduce reliability of your travel, giving truly a rail-like experience in terms, in terms of your, your getting there. A few of the metrics that go along with that, self-explanatory, but, but basically you can see that with the, the original locally preferred alternative, you're about 11 miles in route length. And the two alternatives that we're talking about bring you in at about eight and a half miles. Travel time is reduced from 24 minutes to around 12 or 13 or 14 minutes. And that dedicated segment from the Norman Station to the terminal is a huge jump from an 8% dedicated guideway to an 89, roughly 90% dedicated guideway and all the, all the benefits that that brings with it. When we talk about a rail-like experience, we think about our heavy rail network and the fact that POVs aren't personally operated vehicles are not getting in the way of that reliability. And so that's what we're trying to mimic here with this, with this as-built environment. And of course, the segment cost is significant, but we, we feel that those costs are worth it because we're not talking about a one or two-year improvement. We're talking about a generational difference here and, and a project that's far more competitive for the types of grants that are going to be required to get this project off the ground. The South Lake BRT final design, we've ordered, we've onboarded the consultant, VHB, to, to complete the preliminary design, advanced final design with this airport connection. We're currently in the procurement process for final design and, and A&E consultant services. Again, the, the scope will be broken into two segments. Segment one there is south of the 285. And then segment two are the two options following the LPA to the College Park Station. And the other one is refining the two alternates with direct access to the airport station. Of course, the environmental process will remain and the NEPA process will continue. We've learned through experience that NEPA, you know, the FTA is very exacting with our NEPA procedures and, and practices. So we are, we're making sure that we build that into our timeline. The consultant procurement process will start next month with selection in April. And just a status update on that, our new consultant team has been onboarded. They're evaluating the alignment segment options shown here. And we've also been out in the community discussing the alignment and future station areas. So on August 2030, you may recall, we presented to the Chamber of Commerce at Clayton State University. And on October 12th, MARTA participated in a bus tour with Clayton Department of Economic Development, highlighting the mountain view and Clayton State station areas and their potential TOD and economic development impact. The project team is also re-engaging with technical partners like GDOT to determine any impacts on alignment options. And then I want to just share some good news on, in terms of recent events. As usual, MARTA is making a lot of effort to maintain a strong presence in the Clayton community. You can see some dates listed there where we have the, the mobile grocery giveaway, the opportunity Clayton Retail and Commercial Economic Development Bus Tour that I just mentioned, Airport Connection Stakeholder Briefings, giveaway number five and number six with Good or Mobile Groceries. And of course, on December 4th, the District 4 Good or Mobile Grocery Giveaway and Reduced Fair Pop-Up. On December 19th, not long from now, we have MARTA Holiday Market Activities and these are some of them, seasonal activities in Clayton County. So we've got our holiday wrapped bus, there are three of them in the, in the entire network. And if someone's fortunate enough to board one of these buses, they'll find that they are not expected to pay a fare. We have carolers at the Clayton County Transit Hub today, as we speak. You can almost hear them if you listen. And we have bus customers will be surprised with holiday cheer and breeze cards on selected bus routes throughout the system. To the right is a, a picture of our amazing ugly sweaters, but this year, they're not that ugly. And I'm just pleased to be able to share them with you.
That's debatable about the ugliness of it.
That's debatable?
I mean, I'm just saying, I'm just saying.
Anyway, we, we are just, we're, we're grateful for the opportunity to continue collaborating with Clayton County. We feel that we've finished the year in a strong position to really demonstrate good growth in FY24 and we're here to do just that. Thank you Chairman.
Well, thank you for that update. Are there any questions for Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Franklin.
First of all, it's good to see you Colleen. Your team did a good job on yesterday briefing everyone.
Thank you.
And I have one main question. So how much did these sweaters cost out of our budget?
Nothing out of our budget. Nothing out of Clayton's budget. No, no, that's, it's core, it's core dollars from MARTA. We do, we do, we were selling them at $50 apiece and a lot of people bought them at $50 apiece. Whatever we made, we gave that to charity. But sadly, I've just been informed that we are down to just a mere handful remaining. So if anyone wants to purchase, you have to fight with Colleen Kiranen to figure out how to get.
Well, I want to say thank you to Jennifer and Hot Tower for their knitting skills. That was very beautiful. Y'all did a great job. So, but I want to go ahead and start here. We had a great meeting yesterday. Once again, I want to go back to the route itself. First, I want to commend you all for the adjustments of the route because as you stated, it's definitely going to allow for us to have more usability, which is the key to us being able to have this successful route. So the first question or first statement I want to make or question, have you all taken into consideration or met in depth with Dr. Smith in regards to the development at the South Lake Mall? Because as you know, with putting a possible parking right there, that's going to release additional funding through the federal government for us to be able to really bring this project to fruition.
Yeah. I, I don't know if this, Carrie, I don't know if we can speak directly to Dr. Smith's engagement, but we do have a, a huge public and stakeholder engagement plan. So if we haven't heard a lot of details from Dr. Smith, that, that door is, that door continues to be open.
Awesome.
Do you have more on that?
And it's really more so far on the record. Go ahead.
Sure. Commissioner Franklin, thanks for the question.
Good to see you.
We have been in regular communication with the Clayton County School System and have gotten great support from Dr. Smith. And we actually have developed maps that show how high school students in particular will be able to take advantage of not only the two bus rapid transit projects, but the local services as well.
I'm glad you said that because that is key. We have actually a educator here in Clayton County that just got elected to the school board in seat of Atlanta. And when I was there that evening, one of his goals was to be able to provide the students there with the passes to be able to get back and forth on MARTA. And so that's something that of course, we're originally from. We've used that some time ago and I'd like to see us implement that through the school system. So thank you for that. Also, I want to make sure that we are looking at it from a comprehensive manner. So additionally, there is this entire aviation program through with our, you know, our kids that are in the schools. So one of the things we want to do is make sure that we not just get the support from them, but have regular meetings so that we can see the volume that could be utilized in that service that can add to, which will also be able to release additional funding as well.
Right.
And then I had a question earlier. Trying to remember when I was on the ATL Board and Jennifer may be able to help me a little bit more. We discussed it briefly and I think she was going to reach out to, look at her, she's like, the Jonathan I get back in. So what we want to do is find out with the plans of this project, with it being implemented initially, would it also be able to allow us to be able to release that funding that's released after a project's been in existence for seven years? There are three buckets of federal funding. And one of those federal fundings requires for the project to be in existence and operational for seven years in order to get an advantageous additional score. It releases another bucket of funds. Adam may be able to look into it, but I'm really excited about what we're doing and how we're moving forward with that.
Thank you, Commissioner Franklin. And yes, as, as these projects gain the connections, gain the time, we've got a team at MARTA that is continually reviewing our added opportunities to get additional funds. That's why we never commit to how many dollars we're going to be getting. We say at this point, you know, we're, I think it's nearly $50 million or something like that on our, on our CIG fund. But, but we anticipate more as the program grows.
Okay. And then I did do a little bit of research since our last meeting, Jennifer and Carrie and everyone. I reached out to my folks back at home and it was stated that what the school system did there was they actually brought in the funding they would have used for regular transportation and allowed that to be able to offset any additional costs outside of discounting the rate. So there definitely is an opportunity there for growth. I think that's about it. I know I had them send me the notes. And it was just one little caveat on the route itself. And it is, and actually it's in District 4. I want to make sure that you all connect with our economic development team because there is a significant boost of residents that are being, that are coming into that Marlboro area, right there on the Mount Zion Road area. Quite a few apartments. So we want to make sure that if there's an opportunity, as we discussed in the meeting, just to put it on record, for there to be some spinoffs from that route, to be able to incorporate those that are heading into that, the route that you all have planned out for us.
Noted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Greenwood?
Thank you sir for your presentation.
Thank you.
Look forward to continued progress. Thank you.
You have an amazing team by the way.
Legislative update, Ohio River South, Mr. How.
Good evening everybody.
Good evening.
We've got both Ohio River South and the Peachtree Government Relations Team here. And thank you, already up. So as you all know, we're at that time of the year where we're about to gear up for the Georgia General Assembly. And so much is happening. This has been a very, very momentous run-up to the 2024 General Assembly. A lot of issues have been flying around. And I'm sure you all are very well aware, we've been working with your staff and also have attended some delegation meetings that the members of the Clayton County delegation put together to really surface some of the big issues that are front and center for Clayton County. A few will be very, very familiar, a handful I think are relatively new. So I'll ask to go to the next slide. And I'm only asking for this slide in particular, we've moved this to the front, it's usually in the back. Just so you know, you've got a full team working on your behalf at the Georgia General Assembly. We're a partnership with Ohio River South as well as Peachtree Government Relations. I think just about everybody who's listed up there is here this evening and you may hear from a couple of those folks in just a few minutes. But just again, wanted to acknowledge, and I think you guys already know this, that we're working really, really diligently on behalf of the county and that we've got a full team that is on top of everything that's happening. There's been a tremendous amount of change, as you'll see on the next slide. I think we talked about it the last time we were here, but the 2024 session has, is really going into, you know, a set of momentous decision-making. It is gabbling in at the beginning, the second Monday in January. It's the second year of the biennial, so 2023 bills that were introduced are still alive. And you'll see a couple of those that are upcoming in just a few minutes, but some that are, include or encompass our legislative priorities and some that we want to fight vociferously against. But the part that I was, the point I was making earlier is that many lawmakers are in their second year of their first biennial, so almost 60 or so lawmakers, including I think three constit-, or yeah, constitutional officers as well. So there's still a tremendous amount of both changes in the air and there's also a number of questions about what the priorities are of the lawmakers themselves who hail from all across the state, not just from the metro Atlanta region. The partisan makeup remains largely unchanged, is still a center-right state with the same majority party in the, both in all the constitutional offices as well as in the House and in the Senate. But I noted here that there's a court ordered reapportionment that did conclude, did wrap up last week. And I think we're all caught, all waiting with bated breath, a decision potentially from the judiciary at the federal level about exactly whether or not the maps that were redrawn stand or if they're redrawn yet again before the March 20, the March 12th, 2024 presidential primary, which won't have any bearing, but the May, so I think 2020, the May 24th primary that's also upcoming. So a lot of change in a very short period of time. And putting on here that the presidential primary is also just four short months away, short four months away, there will be a lot of attention on the Peach State and its, its standing and all the things that are going on here. So just wanted to use that as a backdrop for a number of the things that we continue to talk about and work on behalf of for Clayton County. Next slide please. I'm just going to power through this, but I think some of the other folks here will have some contributions to make. Before we get into the legislative priorities for 2024, we just wanted to underscore the study committees that were authorized in 2023 because they may have some meaningful bearings on what comes forward in the next legislative session. So certificate of need, modernization is one that both the House and Senate authorized. Metro Atlanta writ large is dealing with an issue in terms of care providers all across the metro Atlanta region and looking for legislative solutions to bring more care providers to communities that need them. I know we've talked about a number of different things here, particularly around EMS delivery time, mental health, service component delivery, et cetera. So both these, the Senate and House study committees, the outcomes of those reports, hopefully we'll see some legislation and will be your early warning system on where those state lawmakers who both crafted those reports, had those hearings, where they see legislation coming out of the General Assembly. Same thing for the joint tax credit review. The panel probably has gotten more ink than any other study committee that I've ever seen. It's just gotten a tremendous amount of attention. But so far, the joint panel has not issued any sort of report. So we don't know what's coming out of it. But as you guys are all very well aware, the state's got $16 billion in reserves. There's a lot of discussion about an additional personal income sales or a tax cut. So there's a tremendous amount of attention being paid to where we're putting dollars for economic development and then how they come out on the other end to the benefit of individual Georgians. Senate Study Committee on the Local Option Sales Tax, I believe, I don't believe Clayton has a loss, I know you have a splosh, but I know that the, all the negotiations over the, the two-year period that preceded us got a lot of attention as well. And really the interplay between counties and cities and how those dollars get delivered and to whom they get delivered is also a big issue. So also a final report issued there. And very similarly, we're awaiting the final report on the service delivery strategy. So exactly how dollars get divided between cities and counties. For those additional dollars that get, that get negotiated every 10 years is something that I know has implications for Clayton County. Next slide please. So a couple of these will be very, very familiar, recovering dollars from Hartsfield-Jackson. I know we are here on a regular basis talking about what that looks like. And I think what we are, what we're very interested in from both the county and the delegation is some degree of coming together about what that needs to look like. We've had offers and meaningful discussion from the General Assembly in years past, but not nearly coming close to filling the, the eight-figure hole that was left when the tax, the jet tax fuel credit was abolished or was taken away from the state of Georgia. So you know, whether or not we're taking an incremental approach or if we're swinging for the fences and we're going to wait until we see the whites in their eyes is really a question. We're looking for direction from both this commission as well as the delegation and more broadly, the entire General Assembly. Because it is a tremendous amount of money and it has a tremendous amount of impact as you all know, in your communities, not only for the county commission, but also for the school board. Funding for mental health services and the Clayton County Service Board is another big issue that I know we've heard specifically from the delegation on. And I think we've had some meaningful discussions with DBHDD and other policymakers about exactly where this is headed. So again, this is another, obviously another big priority for Clayton County, looking for your input. But I know you guys have been kept up to speed as to what's happened so far in terms of building for the capacity to house a building and then what needs to happen in terms of operational dollars to keep this, this facility going forward. Support for continuing to right-size public safety compensation, we've had a number of sort of one-off pieces of legislation to really make sure that Clayton County is in line with its neighbors to the north and to the south as you compete for public safety personnel and for others that are going to keep the, the county safe. And then one piece of legislation that we are watching very closely and we're advocates for in the 2023 session was really on EMS reform. I think I mentioned some of the service times. And I think just writ large, healthcare is a big issue for metro Atlanta, Kala counties. We are hopeful that we can come up with some solutions that the General Assembly will see and will meet with their approval. So next slide. Or, and again, we're happy to answer any questions. I think that actually is the final slide. We tried to make this brief, but happy to talk through these issues and others. And I know you guys have all been talking amongst yourselves and with the delegation about exactly where you want to put your emphasis for 2024. So, and before I say another word, let me introduce just a handful of the ORS and the PGR team, Janelle Bova, Chuck Meadows, and a new member, actually Chuck is new to you guys as well. Chuck Meadows and Elise Murray are new members of the Ohio River South team, but no strangers to the General Assembly and no strangers to the issues that we're talking about here tonight. So they may be up here to help answer some of these questions at some point or another, but happy to throw this back to the commission.
All right. Definitely good to see you and the team as always. Are there any questions for Mr. Franklin?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, Commissioner Anderson.
And just one. I just want to say, you know, it's very valuable, you know, when we come down and visit. And I just want to ask you, were there any upcoming events or committee meetings where our presence or our input as commissioners would be valuable, where we could come in and speak on our behalves to help Clayton County?
No, I'm so glad you asked that question. In years past, Commissioner Anderson, we have organized or helped organize with leaders from the county, Clayton County Day. And we try to, we are really intentional about making sure that other leaders from the General Assembly, constitutional officers, et cetera, are there to hear our concerns. So we certainly intend to help produce another Clayton County Day for the commission and to have all the stakeholders that you want to be in the room. I see a number of other folks who have come to Clayton County Day at the General Assembly here in this room. We will be certain to give you a real calendar of exactly where things are. You know, last year we got lucky, we got the entire adjournment resolution from the first week of the General Assembly. So we knew what days we'd be in and what days we'd see important leaders in the Capitol and decisions being made. And we're going to do our best as soon as we have those, those details to share them with you as well.
Okay. And I participate in Clayton County Day as well, but I'm just saying outside of that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Let's make sure we're hitting those committees or making sure if we need to be there, that our presence is there.
Absolutely. And I just, again, I think you guys have done a better job than most of inviting our team to meet with department heads at Clayton County. I was thrilled to be a part of the retreat, the board retreat you guys did this, early this year and also to join in on the Friday meeting. So it's been great not only here from the commissioners, but also from members of your team who are on the front lines and really really help address the issues that are there. So thank you for, for calling that out.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Franklin.
And it's good to see you, Mr. Franklin.
Likewise.
First, I wanna say thank you for the work you've done. Thank you all for your team for what you do. I wanna start, if I can, with the EMS side. Can we go back to that slide real quick?
Sure. I think it's two, no, there you go. One more for, for it.
There we go. One of the things that I've been doing for the past, believe it or not, seven years is speaking to other jurisdictions to gather exactly how much of an impact the cost to their local taxpayers, how much of that impact is for those that have a lot of highways like we do. And in that conversation, and I know Chief is here, and we could talk about it a little bit more offline, and I know that there's a formula that the state uses to reimburse us, but at the same token, what's happening in Clayton County is, as opposed to the state troopers handling a lot of things that are happening, is always on our police department, the sheriff's department, and firing EMS, which is fine, but the only thing is it takes us out of service within the community, and a lot of times when we're waiting for them to show up, especially if it's a death, they end up waiting, if I'm right, Chief, over an hour to two hours, can you correct me, please? So that's one of the things that I know that even though it may not be high-level, but it's most impactful if we can begin that conversation, and I could tell you, within my regular day job, I've spoken to jurisdictions that's north as Dade County, Georgia, and they're having an issue more so on the Tennessee side, but all the way down to Glenn County, Georgia. So where those jurisdictions that have so many state roads running through them, we're hit the hardest, and we don't get reimbursed, we're constantly having to replace those vehicles, the fire trucks, as well as other vehicles. So that's the first thing, and it's something that we can discuss. It is, it's amenable among not just the police department and post and EMS and emergency services, but it's also amenable among the Sheriff's Association. And I had a meeting just two weeks ago specifically with one of the EMS leads in Cherokee County, and that was part of our discussion. So if you can make a note on that, that would be great.
I would, just, that's really helpful to know, and I think especially since you've gone out beyond just the jurisdictional borders of Clayton County and have a larger sample size of the sort of impacts you've seen, we'd love any information you consider there, because speaking with collective voices are heard a little bit louder than just the one at the General Assembly, yeah.
So the other portion, I heard you, Chief, and again, I go, it was echoed among other emergency management services, the restriction on the vehicles on how long they can be in service is also an issue for us, and not just us, but other jurisdictions, because then what we're doing is having to transport people outside of the county. Well, now we're going beyond the time that's allowable for those type of vehicles to be on the road. Again, I would love to do a follow-up and plan a meeting where I can invite those here and Mr. COO, so that we can begin to have that conversation and be able to see if we can at least get some type of a push. I'm not saying it's gonna be done overnight, two days, I mean, three years, but it's something that I think just has not been brought up, and it would be extremely impactful to us because I think there's a piece on our vehicles we keep having to replace quite often because of that additional, I guess, stipulation from both the federal government as well as the Department of Transportation.
I agree, that's really helpful. We haven't had this level of discussion about EMS response times in service and even the impact and the wear and tear on the road, so, you know, synthesizing this together, I think that there is some appetite to address some of these issues in the General Assembly, and the more, the better prepared we can come to talk about this holistically, the better off we're gonna be when we have this conversation with lawmakers. So thank you, and we'll certainly follow up to find out any more information you are willing to share.
Thank you, and thank you for what you do.
Any other questions?
Chairman.
Commissioner Davis.
What is the current conversation and temperament amongst the legislatures as far as Jackson, as far as the International Airport and Clayton County does?
Yeah, so Commissioner Davis, I don't know how much time you have, but I'll try to be succinct. I, I think that generally, the members of leadership, particularly in the Ways and Means Committee, are aware of our efforts to come to some more equitable distribution of resources from Hartsfield-Jackson and Clayton County. I think they know it's a problem, they think they, they're certainly aware that we have petitioned them for redress, and I think that where we run into a bit of a stalemate is that it's also the capital city, and there's a, there's a reticence to reach into the capital city's pocket and to say, hey, here's what you owe to the communities that have been impacted. And I'll just say, just further, where there's an opportunity, and I think we've been working around this, is to come up with, whether it's a dollar amount, whether it's a, a set of impacts that we can agree to that can be considered either by the General Assembly or directly by the City of Atlanta. So we, we've had a number of those conversations, I think a number of folks who are in this room have been a part of them, but we haven't come to that, to that conclusion, where we can conclusively say, here's what should be, here's what should be paid, and I think that's, that's probably what's, what the holdup has been.
Has there been any type of health studies done as far as asthmatic, excuse me, as far as our asthmatic population, do we have an increased one with jet fuel being burned and dropped over our count?
Yeah, that's, I don't have the answer to that question.
That's not in his jurisdiction.
Yeah, that's, yeah, fair enough, thank you, for answering that question. If I was aware, I would certainly let you know. I, I think there are a number too, the, where I think you're headed, there are a number of unseen impacts that are very, very difficult to quantify, and I think that, you know, unfortunately, as it currently stands, it's incumbent upon those seeking redress to say, here's what we're owed and here's why, right? So I, I think that there probably, it's probably, there's probably space for us to spend a lot more time to say, here are all the things that come along with being the seat of the world's busiest airport, many of which were not contemplated both by the folks who lead the airport and the Department of Aviation, or by the General Assembly, many of whom are not in metro Atlanta.
And that question is not more to get an answer, get a direct answer, but is to more to begin to suggest other means that we need to move to mitigate.
Sure.
Situation.
Yeah, I, I would welcome, cause I, you know, as you guys all know, we've been before you for the last four years, and we wanna see redress on this issue as much as you do, and I, I think it'd be great to have some forum, whether it's one that we bring together through the delegation, or through the commission, or through council or Department of Aviation, that can, you know, come together as honest brokers and say, here's what we're willing to consider. And I think so far, we've had a lot of different voices, and rightfully so, it's the world's busiest airport, right, and it's Clayton County, and a number of other impacted jurisdictions as well. So I, my suggestion is not to narrow the focus necessarily, but to at least say, here's what we think has to be considered in any sort of an arrangement that, that goes forward.
Thank you.
And let me just piggyback off of that, because those conversations are being had with the city. We haven't had a recent conversation with them, but again, we have pointed out to the mayor that those conversations need to continue, but they have been based along the lines of service delivery. We all know that world's busiest airport being in the seat of Clayton County comes with everybody being arrested, goes to Clayton County Jail. Everybody who's prosecuted goes to Clayton County Court System. What do we receive from the City of Atlanta in that space? Zero, because it is within the boundaries of Clayton County. So there is conversation that's being had in reference to how do we put a number on our service delivery that the citizens of Clayton County are paying as a result of the airport being in our jurisdiction? Mr. Stanford.
Yes, Chairman, just wanted to echo on a couple of things that Commissioner Davis brought up, and Howard did a great job kind of framing some of the context there. I think the main thing, this board saw the value of looking at some of the environmental impacts, not just from the airport, from the county. By the product, the fact that the county and the board created Office of Resiliency and Sustainability, one of the major focal points was for you to address that very issue. So we're talking specifically about health disparities and some of the things that maybe happen from that area, but we're also talking about environmental impacts. The fact that Clayton County sits kind of in a swell and impervious surfaces that are being built out when that water is running downstream has a direct impact on our citizens. And so even when Commissioner Hambrik and others are talking to the citizens about how do we take care of some of the runoff in their backyards, we are documenting that information, so when we're making our case to those that might be impacting the regional build-out in our community, that they at some point in time can make us whole, either through the federal government or through some type of agreement with them to make that work. So just wanna make sure that we emphasize the ORS team, who plays a huge role in helping us with that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I don't have a question, but just to mention to you and to the Office of Resiliency that those studies regarding health issues have been done over the years, so there's probably some documentation somewhere in the county that has that information, especially with those neighborhoods in the Normandy subdivision and those subdivisions behind QuickTrip and all, so there was a lot of information regarding.
Commissioner Hambrik is right, also kind of the regional build-out that's taking place is that, so buildings or, or development that might be taking place in, in South Fulton, or even in Fayette, or in Henry County, all these counties that are joining the county, what happens more often than not, they're not subject to certain planning or regional elements in space. So when you have the build-out around, if you have a regional contingency in place addressing that, and ARC and some of the others do a phenomenal job in place, but they don't know all the development. So what we're having is those unintended consequences, the cause of that development that causes the challenges throughout the region, but more importantly, directly impacting Clayton County. So again, we're just trying to be a little more thoughtful and being better stewards in having those discussions about.
Mr. Chair.
Those developments.
Commissioner Franklin.
Yes, I wanna, I'm glad you brought that up. That's concerning, though, that we still feel that way considering that we have the Aerropolis that's supposed to be there just for that purpose, as well as the ARC being involved, for the purpose of being able to make sure that we're looking at it from a regional standpoint of all the development. So if there's a gap there, then we need to go back and analyze why that gap does exist in terms of the knowledge base of the development. Because, I mean, Aerropolis, when was it developed in this quasi-governmental agency? I mean, it's, it's in existence for that very same purpose, so are we not participating enough? Are we not coming together and bringing the right questions to the table or the right information? But we gotta kind of figure out how to share that up, because the mechanism is there.
Yeah, so Commissioner, my point wasn't so much about not communicating with those regional elements in place, it's the fact that it's still been driven by a municipality in space. The zoning laws in Henry County, the zoning laws in South Fulton ain't one of the same in Clayton County. So whatever their preference might be for the build-out may have a inverse impact on the county, but ARC and others may help us, advise us in that space, but they don't serve as a regional authority to make those changes without those municipalities being involved as well. So I just wanna make the delineation between not, that we're not having the discussions, is that certain laws in other municipalities have a potential adverse impact on the county that we have to have a better, even conversation with them as well about development.
That's a great point. We can continue that conversation because the CIDs, which are the Community Improvement Districts, are there for that as well. But in terms of the environmental studies and so forth, I definitely think we should give kudos to Finding the Flint, that organization has been, like you mentioned, has been working so diligently for so long, and their research has gone even as far down to the Fayette, Clayton Fayette line, which is exactly what you spoke of, Mr. COO. So I think at the end of the day, for us as a governing body, we have to understand where we can be most impactful, because otherwise, we're just talking. Because at the end of the day, we're talking about the, the federal government, along with the City of Atlanta, making this change. It didn't happen overnight, and there are three airports in the entire United States that are affected by it. So it goes back to what you stated, Howard, about a collective voice is a stronger voice, and unfortunately, the truth is, as long as we're alone, we're not gonna get as far. We just gotta continue to push along those lines, and not to give him too much of a kudos, but we got somebody back there that used to be a president when they go, and he can let us know that that's where those benefits come in and where those relationships come in to be able to have those conversations. That's just a, a, a statement so that you are aware that I'm aware that we can't do it alone.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, thank you for the work that you're doing on behalf of Clayton County.
All right, let's move on to alternative capital funding. Mr. COO, Stanford.
All right, good evening again, Chairman, Vice Chair, and Board of Commissioners. I might be very, very brief.
Hold on, hold on just a second.
You put your preacher voice on there.
Please.
Yes, sir. So in our last update, we talked about alternative funding, and the collective C-suite came before the board to talk specifically about talking to our financial advisor, Ed Wall, about what might be a great opportunity to maximize. One of the things we talked about was general obligation bonds, using our URA, which is the Urban Redevelopment Authority, to go forth and bring forth those bonds and look at an alternative funding. I, before we started the work session today, I forwarded over to each of the board members a packet of information that kind of gave you kind of a roadmap about the ins and outs about alternative funding and the pros and cons to those respective tools. The only thing I wanted to provide the board an update on now is that it appears that there might be some other values with other authorities to be created, help with that. For instance, I mean, some of our other jurisdictions and municipalities, they have something called a jail authority or a public facilities authority. In essence, what those individuals do, when you have certain funding needs, they institute bond development to those areas, they bond out the projects through either the jail authority and/or the public facilities authority. So that's kind of a nuance to our discussion. We provided a couple of House bills and resolutions in that packet that I sent out via email for your review, to get your thoughts on that, and as we continue to talk about, you know, bringing in additional funding, please give us some additional thoughts about, do you see the value of potentially creating either a jail authority or, or and/or a public facilities authority to address some of the financial needs throughout the county? So that's really all I wanted to provide you as pertaining to the alternative funding, and again, I yield the floor to you all if you have any questions.
I do.
Commissioner Hambrik.
You say the jail authority and some of the authorities.
Yes, ma'am. So there's one, the jail authority specifically, is that if you needed some capital improvements in the jail, you can leverage bonds directly to this authority that's created by, by the commission, and then in turn, and then the funds go directly to the jail authority. Where we thought that might be somewhat short-sighted, the fact that the jail is a facility that the board is responsible for, but we have other facilities that have financial needs. So there might be a value in going to a public facilities authority, so therefore, it would include the jail and other public facilities, and when we're trying to leverage funding, is the goal.
Any other questions?
I just wanna say, kudos, I like the public facilities authority, because again, you can touch every, you can touch all of the facilities, all the organizations that we need.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Land use.
Mr. Jiki.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair Commissioners, good evening. I have two presentations this evening, and I'll start with the land use, change frequency. What I'm, next slide, what I'm discussing here is how we will handle land use going forward. As you know, we are in the process of updating the comprehensive plan, and in doing that, a lot of work is being actually put in place. And if you think about economic development, where does it start? It starts with land use. As you know, over the years, I've discussed that we can now rezone ourselves into what we wanna be. It doesn't work that way. It starts with land use. So in doing so, since we are redoing our land use and the vision here that you guys have shared with me and them is that we have an, we need an economic development-driven land use, so that's what they're working on. So in doing that, since land use is a foundation that will base how we envision the county to look in the future, and zoning is the tool to implement the land use, therefore, if you have, I'll use this analogy, if you house a house design, a house designed, and they start building, and you keep changing the plan, invariably, you're gonna end up with a house you didn't think of, it gonna look different completely from the plan. That's what's happening. So the suggestion here, currently, we change land use at every zoning meeting if it comes up. The proposal here is to change land use only twice. It's not new in the metro, some jurisdictions use that. We do it only twice a year, and the reasoning behind it is, in land use, there is a work program included in land use. It gives us a chance to work the work program, to make sure the elements of the work program are put in place. It also makes sure that, what I'm proposing is so that we give our new comprehensive plan a chance to survive, because the actual work ends in May, it gets adopted around October, giving the board a chance to look at what's in it and what changes we're gonna make before we actually submit this thing to ARC. And it also, the plan is to redirect our thinking. If we have a plan and we need to change the plan, do we need to do we need to change the plan sometimes? The answer is yes. If we have to, then our approach to that change will not be a parcel-specific change. It will be a comprehensive change. Does that benefit the bigger picture of what we're doing? So that's why we're doing the land use. So if you look at the slide you see there, it's one of the things that go in the back of the land use, which is called the work program. And it has things we need to do in the short term, midterm, and long term. What we try to do is be able to implement at least the mid, the short and midterm. So what we're doing is, it will require some text amendment. We're going to be bringing an, a text to initiate this work. This is just to present to you, when you see it, where our thinking is. In that discussion, if it's the pleasure of the board to approve it, then we can move forward to it. And the plan here is, the current zoning calendar for 2023 actually ends in March 24. And that will be the last, the first month of the land use change. The next land use change will be in October. So if it's the pleasure of the board, we start advertising it now so that we kind of have three months of telling developers in the county, this is where we headed, and this is what we're going to be going, doing going forward. So that will be the plan here. But this presentation is kind of brief you and said, when you see a request to initiate that work, because we have to go into code and make some amendments, so that you know exactly where we are headed with it. So.
So tell me, if we hold those requests for six months, then if October rolls back around, or rolls around, what does that, what kind of impacts that going to do on the hearings?
We're not going to be holding them. We just said that the calendar is now open after March. Till the next time the calendar will be open, we.
Accepted, as per the acceptance.
Yeah, except, and this change is minus what its board initiated. The board, you guys have the authority to initiate any change you want for projects you want to do. So if the board decide to do a project and it requires land use change, that is not included in what I'm saying, because the board really have the autonomy to do that. But what we're saying to the public is that we do a calendar that shows when, we don't start collecting applications in April for October. So they have a window. They're going to apply for this, where we do land use. So it's something we need to get some more details of the intricacies, like the question you asked, we thought about that. The jurisdictions that are doing it, I actually forgot, I was involved in one when we did it. I just got to go back, think about, what is the logistics of the start point? How did we trigger that off? But they're still using it, and it's, and it's working. The main emphasis is the ability to give the plan a chance to be implemented.
Mr. Jiki.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hammer.
Does that mean that we are holding possible developments that may be coming before us or businesses that want to come before us? Say if someone, and I assume you are working with economic development.
I haven't said anything to them about this. I want to kind of share the idea here and get your feedbacks.
Okay, if a business were to go to economic development and say, I want to do X, Y, Z, and within that time period, is there a hold on that? Is that what you're saying, or we can go ahead and look at that?
Well, didn't you say that we had the autonomy to do, to move forward with any project we would like to see anyway?
Yes. There, I don't want to preempt the Economic Development Director. They are reached a way of, when a business hits a certain, if a development hits a certain threshold, there are ways of expediting the process, where we prepare the dinner table for them, and they'll come. At that point, Chairman, you're right. The board initiates that change, because when they've met the threshold, then we can go ahead and do that. But the details, we have to work out. Yeah, short answer to you, there are some projects that could be delayed yet. But if you meet the threshold that the board will set as to, if this development hits this threshold, number of employment, capital, initial capital hourly, and all those things, if you meet those thresholds, that means you're going to impact our tax digest. If you're not going to impact our tax digest, why are we really doing that? So those are the things we need to work out and understand the dynamics of it. Then we'll be able, yes, when we're saying, hold on, wait till it's time, we're really not losing anything. Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next, it's also on your house.
Okay, thank you. Next, my next presentation, it's about posting of the public signs.
Can I have a question, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
And it's regarding the posting, why it's funny. Didn't we just go through this about a year and a half ago?
We were talking about the size and size of the signs.
Yeah, we went through this about a year and a half.
Two years ago, we did the size, font, and all of that. Has something changed since then?
No, that's not what this is about.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so currently, the code talks about where the petitioner allows the zoning administrator to post the subject property, which puts it squarely with us to do. What this is about is to change that, where the petitioner is the one actually posting the sign. So we put it, and we have mechanisms of making sure that they did, and when they don't do it, it's up to them. They don't understand. Within the zoning procedural law, if you don't post the signs per that state law, then your case cannot be heard. Even now, if someone does not give us the certified mail to show they sent notices, we don't even advertise them, because they can't move forward. That's really state law. So what we're saying here is, we want the, we want to make, we would like to initiate a change in our code. They put, to put the requirement to post sites to the applicant, then what we have to do is make some decisions as to where are they using the printing press that we use right now? We're going to get the details of that sign, like Commissioner Franklin alluded to earlier, because we establish a sign size and all there. Give them those specs, saying that when you post, it must be according to the specs. Then we do that. But the idea is to transfer it to them to do.
And what other jurisdictions are doing that?
There are a number of jurisdictions that are doing it. DeCapo's doing it for a while. I think some, there are some other ones that are putting it in the hands of the applicant to do.
Is Fayette doing it? Have you done your studies on that?
This is to initiate, so we can go do all the studies and make sure we know the issues they're having, because we know some people are doing, but we need to find out what are the issues they're having, so that to see if we can prevent or mitigate the issues.
So, okay, Mr. Chair, I want to make sure I'm clear, because I want to make sure I'm following. This says, according to you, public hearing sign posting proposal.
Yes.
So what you're telling me is that you all have not done any research to see what are the, or have you done research to see what are the best practices in other jurisdictions, other than DeCapo, because I think you come from DeCapo.
Yeah, we're in the process of doing it. Commissioner, if you look at the second paragraph, it says approval to initiate. We, we only initiate when the board says, go do it. Then we start, go real deeply, spend time, start doing it. So this is just a presentation to say to the board, this is what we'd like to do. We would like to initiate it and go get all the issue, work out all the angles. Then I bring you back to the board to look at.
So I, I got to make, this is a work session, so I want to make sure, and Mr. C O O, you may need to come up. It says, we are requesting from the Board of Commissioners approval to initiate a text amendment to allow the review and propose a alternative to current method of posting signs. So what is the research that was done that is the impetus for S E to even consider this? What was that research? I just want to know, so we can put our minds around it. Because there has to be some reason why we decided, you know what, let's shift this responsibility. So what was the impetus for it? If there wasn't research done, then what was the impetus for this to come to us to consider? Because you're asking us to evaluate, but there's not enough to evaluate.
Okay. The impetus for this is that, in our current contract for the collaborative firm, is that the firm actually posts signs. For years, there have been some issues in there, and we have made some mistakes. And they pointed out that, in some jurisdictions also, that applicants post the signs, and we put, and they put, they post the sign and send the information to the county. And sometimes, when the signs, they will be responsible, that we don't have enough staff to, when you put up signs, there are places where the signs get knocked down by wind, or even individuals go pull up the signs. That happens. They go pull up the sign and put it somewhere else. So in having all these issues, and we're saying that if we put this responsibility on the applicants, we don't have to chase that around. And part of the discussion, it's what our current, when they brought up that, they brought this up some time ago. I really didn't want to do it, because we wanted to manage doing it, manage doing it ourselves. There was an issue about, on the contract, about transportation. They cannot use county vehicle. The consultants cannot use county vehicle to do this. And we had a staff member months ago, while he was putting up signs, got into an accident. So for me, at that point, I have really, I wait to rethink what's going on.
Right. So Commissioner, getting back.
Hold on one second, please.
Sure.
That's a known risk. If that's the case, I mean, that's almost like the deer in the headlights response. So if that's the case, then we're not going to have any more deputies, any more police officers, any more EMS, because they get in accidents. So I'm not questioning what you're proposing. What is still absent and missing is that, what is the research that was done for you all to make this proposal? And we can have this conversation offline, and I brought it up to the board before, but I, you know, had questions on how many people actually really working in the community on development division versus how much is resourced out. See, what I find is, we have an issue. We put a Band-Aid on the issue, but the issue still exists. And so we never really circle back around to figure out what the true issue is by prioritization of understanding what is the goal, what is the problem. To say that, well, you know, somebody got hurt, I mean, we sit back there in executive session all day long with employees getting hurt. We don't want employees to get hurt. But that cannot be the impetus for why you want to push this onto ownership of somebody else. So if that contract is not working, we need to look at it. If we need to hire more individuals as opposed to allowing for your entire division to be outsourced, then that's what we need to evaluate.
Hold on a second, let's go.
So Commissioner, getting back to the essence of your question, you were asking about what was the impetus behind. I think Director Jiki spoke specifically to, we have a contractor that has relationships throughout the county, throughout the metro area, that provided context to an issue that seems to be working in other municipalities with regard to that.
Okay.
So that was the impetus behind bringing it forth. If I would be so respectful to remind the collective board, these are work sessions. These are where the idea should be flushed out. We don't come to the table with all the machinations, all the research around the requests. I think what we try to do is bring forth the information and let the board tell us whether or not we're on the right track or we're not. So I think in some instances, the questions that you may have that will give us better insight about what you would need to do, or what would be beneficial to you to either vote yea or nay to something, and clearly, it's our responsibility to make sure we give you that, that request, that requested information. So in Mr. Jiki's defense, I think what he's trying to do is that there seems to be another alternative out there that can address some of the concerns with problems that pertains to signage posting. He's bringing forth an idea to the board, and the board can tell us whether or not that's a direction we need to head down, or more importantly, that's not something we want you to do, then makes sense, you need to find something else. So we try to ensure that we use the work sessions for what, as you being the genesis of the work sessions, to ensure that we're reflecting those things that are needed. So therefore, when we do put it on the board agenda for a vote, then all those areas are flushed out, so that we're not going through the process about what we didn't do on the front end.
Commissioner Davis.
Yeah, listening to this, it sounds like that is the reason to approve, to initiate this. It seems like there's a safety concern, as well as just an implementation from the business standpoint of putting these signs out. So I think that right there dictates, hey, we might need to look at modifying or changing, or even replacing the process to get it done.
Anybody else?
When you bake a cake, you got to bring all the ingredients, and then we can taste it and see if we like it or not. That's what I'm trying to say with that. We need to do more research on this. I'm so sorry. It's still missing information. I've heard you clearly. And then what really concerns me, and I got to be very, very honest, we just had the person that holds the contract that was here, and they're not even here to speak on behalf of it. So again, it's still missing pieces to this presentation. The work session is a work session. Yes, it is. And it's no different than what happened when Marta came and met with us individually on these matters and then gave it to us collectively. So I thank you for your presentation. I thank you for the proposal. But I do need, we, I personally would like to see a little bit more information provided. And I just have to speak to, it's really unfair to say, well, just because somebody got hurt. I mean, there are all kinds of things that go into that. Was the person, I mean, was the person physically able to do the job? What, I mean, we just can't make, this is the challenge I have with our county right now. We make decisions based upon one or two factors that may not be the main factors for consideration. Simple as that. Simple as that. So again, if the contract needs to be tweaked, tweak the contract. If you need to now not have that service to be provided under the agreement, bring that and say, these are the options we have to hire individuals, because again, we have able bodies that are constantly putting themselves in harm's way. We got officers that are right here in the middle of traffic, so we can't use one incident of somebody getting hurt for a reason that we change policy moving forward that's going to affect us for generations to come. We have to evaluate it completely and solely, and make sure that we have all the factors to consider. You all are doing an amazing job, but those facts are the facts for me.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And as the C O stated, work sessions, we're getting a little bit now, he's give, he's asking, Mr. Jiki is asking, to see if we have an interest in finding out more about this option. First, first work session, nothing says that additional work sessions will not be had on this very matter, to have the collaborative firm here to answer additional questions as well as follow-up information. This is something that makes sense to me in terms of just seeing if the board has an appetite for this, because if not, he's spinning his wheels, if he's going to do it without our input on it. For me personally, I think we need to, you know, look at it a little bit more and bring back some more answers, as Commissioner Franklin has said. But we, this is something that we always want our directors to think outside of the box. Bring to us those options, alternatives, for us to say, yes, good idea, or no, that's not going to go anywhere. But at the end of the day, it's a board's decision.
Okay, I agree with that.
The majority of the board has to make the decision, and then we have to move forward. And we need to move forward with, with logical thinking, with thinking, what is in the best interest of our employees, as well as how do we get this job done efficiently and in everybody's best interest? Police officers being out in the street, yes. They got traffic lights, not traffic lights, I'm sorry, sirens and lights and all that good stuff to make sure that people know that they're there, out there directing traffic or doing whatever they're doing. But safety is paramount as well.
I agree.
Commissioner Hammer.
Mr. Jiki.
Yes, ma'am.
I like the idea.
Thank you, Commissioner.
So I, really, because I look, I see those signs all the time, and either they're moved, they're knocked down, or whatever. And maybe the business will, because. they're knocked down, or whatever, and maybe the business will, because they want whatever this development to happen, they'll monitor their signs. And they'll have staff to do that. That's saving us money. And it's saving us money too, for just making those signs and all. And I like it. I like that idea. We can try it. You know, and if it doesn't work, then we can go back to the old way. But I really like it, because I have a problem sometime with, you know, the signs that we, we discussed that about a year and a half ago. So I mean, I'm excited about it.
And let me just ask one last time. You said, what's the repercussions of them not posting the signs properly, or making sure that they are standing up?
If they don't post the signs.
Speaking to the mic.
If they don't post the signs, or adequately notice the public, we cannot, you as the board cannot hear that case, because they will not be meeting the basic tenements of the zoning procedure law, because it requires public participation. Posting of signs and properly noticing the immediately impacted folks are part of inviting the public to come to the meeting. So, that will be on them to do.
So does the law state that they post the signs, or we post the signs?
Our code, our code say we. Now, we want to change it that it's them doing it, yes.
I'm glad you said that. I'm sorry. I'm glad you said logical, Mr. Chair, because I want all of us, you got to meditate, breathe, do whatever you need to do. We're going to talk about logic. So right now, what is it costing us to be able to have the contractors go do it, since it's on us? What does that cost? Do we have that? Or can you get it back to us?
Yeah, I can get it back. We know how much it is, but I don't know, I don't have it at the top of my head.
One more question, or two more. Don't these individuals pay a fee to be able to have us provide that service, and that's in their application fee? That was part of what we reviewed a year and a half ago. For those that are coming to bring items before the board for zoning, they pay a application fee that encompasses that being done.
Well, the application fee doesn't quite delineate all the stuff that we do in processing. So, we currently incur the cost of printing the sign and putting it on what the board agreed it is to be on. That costs money to do each cycle, and so that's not part of the application fee.
I'm glad you said that. So, next meeting, because as Mr. Chair said, it's the first one, we need the CFO to bring that information. Let me tell you why. Because when you're talking about it's going to cost us less, how is it going to cost us less, when now how are you going to go out and monitor to see that the business owners have put it out? Who's going to police that? Who are you going to pay to police that? How are we going to prove that?
The business, the.
And now we've become punitive for somebody to come do business with our county. So we're penalizing them, not getting new business in, because it's their responsibility. I don't understand that part.
I, Commissioner, not quite. And that's not the narrative. When the petitioner posts that and monitors it themselves, what happens now and happens if the citizens, the active citizens, see that the sign is not there? We calling the petitioner to go make sure the sign is there. So we, they are responsible, and they will monitor their signs partly because they are very interested in getting to this hearing. They are interested in getting to the hearing, so they monitor their own signs, because they are dealing with one case. We are dealing with 10 or more. So, the issue is not if it's going to cost us less, as you know, we're not a profit-making entity.
Correct.
Yeah, we're not a profit-making entity. So the idea is, the idea is, who is best to do the service? And we think is the petitioner.
Okay. I'm glad you said that it's not going to save us any, because I couldn't figure that one out.
It's not about money.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Go ahead. Good, Chairman. One last thing, Commissioner, you brought up a good point with regard to, trying to ensure that we get all the answers in its totality from all board members is important. It's important to me, it's important to our staff. So as you talked specifically about the research, help us understand what additional information outside of the areas you just asked for, with the CFO providing some information, and try to see what are the best practices outside of the KF County that might be doing this. What are some of the other information you need in order for you to feel comfortable with the information that we're providing to you to be able to make a more informed decision?
As I stated on record, we need to know right now, what is the fee being paid? Because there is a fee being paid. How much is being covered underneath that fee, because we're not in a profit-making business? And then outside of that, again, it's just no different than when we put laws in place. If you put something in space in place, then you also have to have a way of monitoring it. So we already increased our productivity, because now we got phones ringing even more, because we're taking complaints. So now you got to create more folks to be able to take the complaint line. I just think that, it's not saying the idea is not good, but it goes back to the same comments I made about the trash when you all brought it forth, and it was stated, oh, it's not going to cost us. Everything costs. So I think that what we've got to get to is really evaluating before we throw out just an idea. The idea happens at the roundtable with you all, but then it takes the CFO to say, these are the costs of what you're proposing. This is the amount that we receive, and you flush that out before it comes to us. But I'll follow up with an email. But I thank you so much for the idea, because I'm now understanding it more. We just need more information, and I'll follow up with the email.
So with that being said, Mr. Jiki, you have enough interest to move forward with digging up some additional information on this initiative. Be prepared to come next work session with those questions that Commissioner Franklin would like to hear, as well as the rest of the board.
All right. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you for the idea.
Mr. Jiki, may I add also, if we could have some kind of just the business process, the process of what's taking place from application to signage, so we even know a timeframe of what we're looking for.
Correct.
So I think that goes into initiating, beginning to look at the proposed alternatives.
Yes.
Thank you.
That's a great point.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I just want to say, that's a great point, Commissioner Davis, because the bottom line is, we got to see where we are and where they're asking for us to go.
Technical Assistance Reports, Small Business Incubator, Office of Economic Development, Ms. Rocker.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chair, and Board Members. This agenda item is, to give you an update and actually a summary, you know, we asked for permission to get a technical assistance grant, which we were granted, a $30,000 grant through the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation for Economic Development Assistance. And so, through that grant process, the company that works with that assigned a consultant to us, and we got to assign the tasker where we felt like we could benefit from this 90-day technical assistance time period, which started in September and is coming to an end. And so, here tonight, we have Ms. Kay West, who is the CEO of Pipe Consulting. She has been working with us from the inception of the technical assistance, which is in September, to talk to us about our incubator. What is it? What do you plan to do with it? Have you asked your community? And all types of other great suggestions, because she's helped stand up incubators in other spaces around the country. So, just wanted you for discussion only to hear her findings and her suggestions and recommendations for us as we go forward with implementing the soft services that'll be inside that building. So Ms. Kay West, meet our Board of Commissioners and get started.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rocker.
Hello, everyone. Kay West from Shreveport, Louisiana. The Economic Development Department was awarded this grant from New Innovation Growth Network, and we really got a chance to dig deep into understanding what the SPOSS is, and how it's going to fund the Small Business Center. And from here, we really just started with a survey that we sent out to the community. I don't know if y'all saw that, but it gained a lot of traction in the community, just to get the community input. And so I think leading with that type of data gave us a basis on what the community was looking for, for this business assistance center that you guys have been talking about for so long. Next slide. And so, another thing that we wanted to dig up, we wanted to find out, you know, what was the, what was in the strategic plan about not just the business center, but what was the plan just centered around small business? And you guys did a good job, including just small business initiatives within your strategic plan, and that was in 2019, so that was very, very recent. And so we also looked at some of the demographics around what the community looks like in terms of who would actually be going to this business center. Next slide. And so, when we got together, we really talked to the Economic Development Department about the goals and objectives, about what they really wanted us to dig deep and understand about the project. And basically, over the last 90 days, which Erica said, we've been engaging with stakeholders as well as the Economic Development Department. And one of the things that we wanted to do, we wanted to recommend model, the business model for the entrepreneurship center, as well as the structure, and then analyze the cost. And so, the second thing that we really dug deep was really looking at other best practices of other business assistance centers, compiling that type of information, also just understanding, again, the feedback from the survey and what that looked like. And then I also drafted some programmatic guidelines, just as a basis of a framework of the information that, you know, the citizens should receive when they go to this business assistance center. And then lastly, we wanted to evaluate the current space and identify some opportunities to really optimize the layout for the business center. Next slide. This is really just talking about our timeline for the engine grant, which was the three-month grant. Next slide. And so, for the project timeline, we kind of laid out, you know, from the time that we really launched the survey into when we think the business center will be actually launched. And so if you have this in your packets, this is really just covering the project, some of the recommendations that are centered around there. One of those recommendations is to put together an advisory committee. You know, most innovation centers, business centers around the country, they are nonprofit innovation centers. They're separate from government. And so one of the things that I recommended to the Economic Development Department was to create a public-private partnership, but also create a nonprofit foundation. That way, that organization could go out and fundraise for operational funding that could really, really benefit standing up and sustaining the Small Business Center. Another thing that I recommended was to stand up an advisory board that could close the feedback loop. These would be business industry experts around small businesses, CEOs, or I guess you could say, decision makers with CDFIs, banks, corporate institutions, who could really bring the value add to serving on the advisory board for this business center. And then also, looking at the design cost, not just the design, but what it's actually going to cost to operate the budget. So, in the next slide, you'll see some recommendations centered around estimated costs from other business centers from around the country that kind of are similar to Clayton County.
Could those boards be one and the same?
Yes. So, one of the things that we talked about, having an advisory committee, or people that are at the table right now could also serve on the actual board when they establish the nonprofit. I think getting the people's buy-in right now, as well as getting them to talk to their companies on, you know, making a donation, or making some type of contribution early on, really matters. And most of the time, when people create the board, those people who are at the table at the beginning are pretty much the people who serve as the board later on. And so, with the survey, one of the things that we found out, the community was highly supportive of having a small business center that operates between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. And, you know, that score was very, very high. It was very solid response, and I would say 90% of the people said that they would like the business assistance center to be open from those timeframes. Next slide. Another one of the recommendations in the survey was to kind of gauge the feedback around what is this center? You know, when the SPOSS was created for this business center, it was thought that it was going to be an incubator. But if you know the meaning of an incubator, it really means that you're going to incubate businesses for a certain period of time, and you're going to create space for those businesses to grow. And so a lot of times, that leaves businesses who are in startup or already existing out of the framework of that. And so, if you hear me say business assistance center or business center, it's because I wanted to be inclusive of that. And that's one of the recommendations that we made to the Economic Development Department. So in terms of programming, the community really responded high into, you know, the number one thing that businesses and the community said was funding, was their number one priority. And that's access to capital, whether it's lending, you know, networking with their CDFIs, banking, that's all inclusive. You know, small businesses, they need funding. The second thing was startup. They want to start up information. They want to be able to take their ideas from a paper napkin all the way to, you know, inception. And so, when you think about resources for starting a business, that startup information was number two, and then incubator. With the recommendation of having incubator programs, this could be something that, you know, in conjunction with the business center, they could actually run an incubator cohort. Because the building is so large, it's like 19,000 square foot, you could really house existing businesses in there, or create a program specifically to incubate businesses, without excluding the other businesses. And then the fourth thing, which is a trend that's happening, you know, across the country, is a place that is somewhere where they can get their permanent licenses, right there in the center. I think that's important, because you create this one-stop shop model that is true in nature, where you get your occupation license, and you don't have to go to two, three different places to get your license. You can have your startup information, you have your license permit all in one place, and that should be the business center. And then the other things that they talked about outside of the accelerator was micro credentialing, procurement, contracting, those were all ranked equally high. And then the top five amenities for the business center, the community really felt strongly on conference rooms, Wi-Fi, co-working, a computer lab, a podcast studio, which are now becoming traditional items for really innovative small business centers. And then the last piece, when we talked about sustainable funding, one of the questions that I did challenge the Economic Development Department was, you know, when you think about sustainability outside of the operational budget, you really have to think about, what are your, where's your source of funding going to come from? In most business centers, they're raising anywhere from $500,000 to $1 million in funds outside of general budgets, if they are public-private partnerships. So that was important to share with them, as well as to kind of start thinking about, you know, who would that responsibility fall on? You know, is it going to be internally for the team? Are you going to create a nonprofit and then let the nonprofit run the center? Or with this public-private partnership, bringing on someone who could cover those costs? And so those are just some of the things that we also talked about. But we, when we polled the public, one of the things that I just really, really was surprised about, the response from the feedback said that the community was in support of a future fee to help support small businesses, which, you know, finding out that information early on could really help you on down the line if you do propose a fee to the community that help instant advise the business center in some type of way. Next slide. So we did have a stakeholder meeting with, which I want to say, we had almost 25 participants from different parts of the counties. And I was really, really impressed about the engagement from these leaders. Some of the things that they recommended was saying that the center needed dedicated staff. And this is important, because when I research business centers and why they fail, that is the number one reason that business centers fail, because they don't have dedicated staff. And this is something that I shared with Erica, a city that I consulted with, they had a similar challenge when the city wanted to move, when the economic development actually wanted to move outside of that business center, you know, they did not have the strength, they did not have the backbone anymore, they did not have the leadership within that business center, because it all fell on the Economic Development Department. So I would, one of my recommendations is to make sure that the business center is staffed, because that is one of the number one reasons why some business centers fail. Also, enhancing soft skills, customer service, talking about, you know, how do you provide tools and training, not just your basic startup information, but more innovate. but more innovate, innovative training for, um, the everyday professional that is starting their business. We also talked about, you know, micro-credentrialling, green certifications, in-house resource centers, libraries. Um, these are things that, you know, sound like, you know, it's an amenity, but, um, what libraries can do for small business centers, not only just serve as a resource, but a lot of the information that small business owners or people who are in, uh, business right now, when they go to research information like the IBIS World Reports, these reports are very costly. And so, having a library or a resource center that could provide these, um, resources for free just adds to the, the, the quality of the center. And then we talked about, um, some, some of the things that we surveyed, like a maker space, um, having a podcast, uh, studio, also offering corporate mentorship, apprenticeship programs, and then even incorporating, you know, what the center looks like. You know, is it gonna have movable furniture? Where are the power outlets placed, um, charging stations? In, in the previous, um, slide, we talked about Wi-Fi. But these are things that, when people go to a business center, that should be something that is incorporated to make them feel like they have access, like true access, um, to a space that belongs to them. Um, and then we also talked about, you know, diversifying the tenants. The space is so large that, you know, one of the centers that I shared with, um, the team, you know, their tenants alone pay for the cost of their business center. So, the types of tenants that you have located in the business center are equally as important as having coworking space because you could offset, um, the cost of running the center just based on having, you know, certain tenants that are willing to pay, uh, a premium for rent income. Next slide. So, when it comes to programming guidelines, I think there are four things that should be, you know, at the top. And the first one is, uh, business assistance. And this could be, you know, provided through partners like SCORE, CDFIs, uh, but technical assistance. People need to be able to package their information in order to get along. I think because access to capital was the first one, not only just thinking about how they're gonna get it, but the process it takes for people to understand that information. If you've never been to college, you probably never put a business plan together. But coming to this business center, you should be able to walk in the door and have, you know, an even playing field by walking into this business center to have those type of reserves, res- resources at your fingertips so you can, um, start and grow your business. And then the next, access to capital. When you think about a one-stop shop, most of the time, they have funding located inside of the business centers so you don't have to, you know, go find a bank. You know where your source of funding is gonna come from. And if you're not ready, by having that one-stop shop or access to capital inside of the business center, you're building a relationship with somebody who can help you eventually access capital if you're not ready, um, right away. And then the next thing was programming that fosters collaboration. Um, people want to, you know, have their, their products or services, uh, displayed, you know, and we know social media is big. But one of the things that, and you'll see later in one of the comparison slides, I got a chance to visit the Russell Innovation Center here. And one of the things that I was highly impressed of, um, was just how they fostered networking, how they fostered collaboration, which is highly important for businesses because that could be your next opportunity, the person sitting next to you, um, in terms of who you're doing business with, your customers, as well as, um, uh, partners that you could, you could really, uh, scale your business just by fostering the right type of collaboration. And then lastly, um, is innovation. The center should have, uh, innovative approaches, whether it's, you know, prototyping or helping small business owners foster their own creativity. And we talked about some of the mechanisms to do that. But one of them is just having state-of-the-art equipment inside of, um, the business center. Next. So, space optimization. When we looked at the space, and because it's so large, um, it is really a place that you could see coworking existing in there, as I spoke of before, a resource library, also having a maker space, and then also having, uh, room for other tenants, whether that's, uh, other businesses, other resource partners, or, um, even tenants that could bring value to the center, um, that may be, um, just homegrown from this area. That's not anywhere else. Next slide. So, cost comparison. When we looked at, um, the center, I wanted to focus on the expenses and revenues of some of the top, uh, entrepreneurship centers. One is Startup Tucson. Um, over the last couple of years, they have really, really, um, been able to leverage, um, EDA dollars. But I will tell you a story about Startup Tucson. When they started, I think they got like a three-hundred or four-hundred thousand dollar grant from the EDA. The following year, the EDA pooled that money. So, they had to go in and fundraise additional monies, not just to offset that, but, um, to really, uh, cover their experience, their expenses for the, for the next year. And they're right around six hundred thousand dollars a year in just expenses. And they're bringing in probably about close to eight hundred thousand. And then the same thing for Rice. Um, because of philanthropy in the Russell family, they are able to, to outraise most of the entrepreneurship centers that I see. But I would tell you again, their expenses are right around, uh, three million dollars a year. And they're spending, um, um, I mean, their revenues are right around eight million. So, they're bringing in a lot of money, and they're spending a lot of money. But at the same time, I think, you know, they're one of a kind. And I shared this with Erica, um, the Rice Center, I have not seen people reduplicate that effort just because of where they are in placement, um, to all of the corporate, um, institutions that are here in Atlanta. I can tell you back home, entrepreneurship center probably wouldn't even raise that much money because we don't have access to those same, um, corporate, um, institutions. But that's not to say that the, the Clayton Center couldn't, um, because of its adjacency to all of the institutions that are here. But then, when you look at, um, the Innovation Depot, that's in Birmingham, Alabama, very similar in size and population. And they're spending right around just the same as Rice, about three million dollars a year. And their revenues are right around three million. So, it's kind of a wash. They're, they're, they're spending more than they're raising. But, um, sometimes you see that with innovation centers where, um, it's a wash, where you're trying to figure out where did the money go? And it's in equipment, it is in programming, it's investing in people, it's, you know, creating revolving loan funds, lending. It's in all of those things, um, as well as, which, when you see the, the size of the staff for these centers, they're right around ten to fourteen people. And when you think about the small staff of Erica and what it would take to run a successful entrepreneurship center, you really have to think about what is gonna be your output? How many people do you plan to reach? And we'll get to some of, um, the metrics and what I'm suggesting, how we, you know, calculate our metrics. Next slide. So, metrics that matter. At the end of the day, we, we're, we want to be focused on outcomes, but it starts with your inputs, your staff, your lending partners, your resource tenants, your Economic Development Department. Um, you wanna think about your outputs, how many businesses you've served, your incubator participants, mentorship, collaboration, ciphers. Um, and then some of your outcomes will be, you know, increased in, increase in loans to businesses, contracts awarded, certifications obtained, and then an upscale workforce. One of the things that we talked about early on was that, you know, this business center is not just for small businesses. When you create a small business, you also create jobs within the community. So, um, in one of the stats for Clayton County, um, Clayton County is huge on small businesses between one to four people. If you can increase that to ten to twelve people, or ten to twenty people, you are, um, focused on workforce development. And so, job creation, new revenue, that's increasing tax base. And then also, metrics like, you know, if someone starts a business and they're able to now pay their mortgage or to pay their debt, send their kids to school. That's an outcome that's, you know, phenomenal, not just for, uh, Clayton County, but, you know, turning that dollar over within the community. And so, we really wanted to highlight that as a metric because that, you know, is not talked about often. Next slide. And so, this is really a lean canvas on, you know, solving the problem. It's really a business plan for, um, the, the small business center here. And we're asking questions, you know, what are the problems that the people are facing? And it's existing businesses need resources to scale. You know, high school graduates need an alternative path to entrepreneurship. And then people with an idea, they need a resource to test, validate, and monetize their passion. And then, right now, we know the alternatives, um, outside of other, uh, small business centers in other parts of the area. We know that our colleges and universities, SBDC Scores, CDFIs, Chambers are all offering some type of small business resource. But how can we, you know, make that a one-stop shop here in Clayton? And the solution is to implement, as you saw, some of the initiatives within the strategic plan. Also, you guys have already made a start with using SPLAS dollars to fund the facility. And then, the grant has provided the technical assistance, but also, um, to further that by creating a foundation and advisory committee, um, to further, you know, help problem solve in the foundation work that goes into creating, um, a business or entrepreneurship center. How will Clayton measure the success of its services? Um, as we spoke on before, um, increase in income, home ownership, the number of open establishments, wealth creations, et cetera. And then, to me, the unique value proposition here is that small business, the Small Business Center will increase the economic vitality of our community by making it easier fa- and faster to start and scale businesses in Clayton. And so, what is the high-level concept? Is really increasing the economic competitive, competitiveness. Because if you can attract, uh, startup companies here as well as, you know, um, help existing businesses, you are increasing economic, um, competitiveness, competitiveness within your community. And the unfair advantage, what separates the competitors or what makes, you know, the Clayton County standout, um, low unemployment, a high focus on academic success, um, being near airport, and then also the industry clusters. Um, channels, what are some of the channels that we could target to, to reach the public to even know about this business center? Direct marketing, social media, internet, radio, partnerships, um, the county newsletter, and then also business associations. And then the segments, um, what are the personas of the people who will, you know, be the first people to, to visit this business center? Uh, number-one, existing businesses that may be struggling, who need help right away. Um, startups, as I said, college graduates. There are so many universities and college institutions around here. And when people graduate, they don't automatically just find a job. And so, one of the things that I did when I graduated college was I, I worked in my hobby for a long time. Um, but learning and helping them monetize that, that creates entrepreneurship. And then also retirees. Um, this, this area has a lower, um, number of retirees, but, you know, the people who are retirees, they may want to go and find a hobby. Or they may already have one and just don't have the access to capital or the resource to scale it. So, these would be some of the early adopters. And then, um, as we said before, businesses who need access to capital and citizens who are looking for resources. And so, the cost structure at the bottom, if you see that, what should be, what, things that should be included in the cost, cost structure, the website, hiring employees, operation, equipment, marketing, and bringing on, um, bringing, bringing businesses to the customers. One of the things that we kind of went back and forth was some of this, the Economic Development Department is already doing. Sometimes when it's a new entrepreneurship center, that entrepreneurship is taking on a lot of these things by themselves. But with economic development, you know, leading and spearheading this, you know, with the marketing, all of the operational things, these are the things that they're doing behind the scenes to even sending out the RFP. These are things that, you know, require their time and effort that is not associated with the cost. But, you know, eventually, that would have to be ironed out to who is that responsibility gonna, you know, end on? Um, and I think that's a, that's a, 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 a great question to, to ask. Um, revenue streams. We talked about receiving revenue from foundations as well as, uh, having a subscription fee for coworking members, revenue from tenant partners, um, and then proposing, as, as I stated before in the survey, proposing, uh, county-wide fee that can fund operational costs. Next. And I think that's the end.
All right.
Mm-hmm.
That's a thorough presentation.
Thank you.
All right, there any questions for Ms. West? Any questions for, uh, Ms. Rocker? All right, again.
Thank you.
Okay.
I did go to, I did come to the, uh, forum. And it was, it was quite informative. Uh, my, my big thought is, this is pretty expansive. And so, I think for you, Erica, we've gotta figure out a way of what we're going to, um, incur in a facility like this and what we're not. Uh, was kind of establishing a scope of work around, around something like this. I should say, a scope of services, I'm sorry.
Scope of services, sure, yes. And I would just like to say, uh, one of the benefits of working with Kay's office is, you know, we've never done this exercise. So, she did, uh, inform us how universities like Clayton State, which we're fortunate to have here, um, are eligible for all types of money if there is an incubator or business resource center in their proximity. And we've been engaging them, Dean Chaco, and even President Lewis has, um, been informed and come to some of our stakeholder meetings. So, um, those things are options of how, you know, possibly, we looked at Clayton State, you know, having some ownership or teaching some of those instructional classes. And that thereby funds it. And in some, like in Gwinnett, when we toured that entrepreneur center and our COO went with us to tour it, uh, they have staff from Gwinnett Tech who, uh, runs the incubator. So, there are just a million ways to do it. And we're grateful for the advice and all these scenarios, but we certainly, you know, can bring that to you. And, and most of them had a staff of two or three. They had an incubator manager, maybe a receptionist up front, and then a person who scheduled the classes for small business programs and training and whatnot, so. Um, but, uh, Ms. West is based in Shreveport, Louisiana, so we appreciate her flying in for this presentation tonight. And she's gonna join us tomorrow at our office Economic Development Reception. And we hope you all will be able to stop in. So, appreciate you even allocating to have this initiative of an incubator, uh, through it being in a SPLAS. So, it's taking some shape.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner.
Great presentation, um, definitely very thorough. Uh, but I would like to see moving forward, um, just our standard overhead costs before we even start putting people in there. Uh, I thank you for definitely, Ms. West, for speaking to, um, the, the, the trueness of being able to not only raise the funds, but hey, you could get money, but it'll be pulled away. I really like the fact that you gave us that information so we're not, um, you know, you know, dealing with some pie in the sky. But, um, it goes back to even what, uh, Commissioner, um, Davis stated. Not just the ideas, you've done your part, but what we need from the staff of the county. We purchased this building. We should already know what the electric's running, what the overhead is costing us. We should have a basic amount of how much it's costing us. We just had a meeting last couple of weeks ago, and we found out our board, right now, we don't even have the four months of reserve that we should necessarily have, um, in our, um, in our fund balance. So, again, this is a great initiative. Love the fact that the citizens voted on it before I became Commissioner. But like anything else, we need to look at the overhead, the operational costs. And you all have done your job to lay it out beautifully. But we then have to be able to get with finance. but we then have to be able to get with finance to put some numbers to it and do it on a projecting, a projective basis of the next five, ten, and twenty years. And especially keeping that scenario in place that you mentioned about you could go out and raise money, but that cost is going to be on us initially. That's something we've got to take a hard look at to figure out how to do that. The other aspect of it is I hear we're pulling in others, but what I find too is a lot of times we duplicate services. Because Clayton State already has a business center. Clayton State already operates through the SBA. I've worked with them when I opened my business almost twenty years ago. So what we got to find out is what's going to make us more attractive here with this business center versus them already going to Clayton State? Or is it going to stretch them further? It's not saying it can't happen, but at the same token, we have to be really realistic with, are we meeting the needs? Are we just duplicating services with it? So that allows us to be able to see, as you stated, how we're going to use this large space. So I definitely echo the sentiments of Commissioner Davis on that. Lot more work to do. We bought this building, it's sitting there, we're paying for it right now. So we need to figure out a way of how we're going to move forward with the, with the current amount that we have within our budget to be utilized for operations.
And thank you, Commissioner Franklin. And to that point, the president of Clayton State has mentioned that he would be open to moving that Small Business Development Center into our incubator.
Okay, good.
Because of what you just said, which is well-founded, we don't want to duplicate. Even our chamber offers classes. So they would be one of those service providers that come in on a Thursday or a Friday to do some of their classes. And we've even mentioned, had like with Central Services and their How to Do Business with the County classes that they offer, they could come there, that would be a site where they offer that once a week or once a month or however often we could, with Ms. Rogers and her team. So that is certainly at the forefront, not duplicating. So thank you for-
I'm so glad you said that. Good work.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Yeah, there's a lot of conversation that's, that's ongoing, and we appreciate the work that you're putting into it. Mr. Stanford?
So Commissioner talked specifically about, the update was really giving you the program and programmatic element regarding the build-out of the, the business center. The timeline that we have for the actual design bill for the incubator, the actual dates, so for the RFP, open on twelve seven. And there is a couple host of evaluation meetings through the remainder of this calendar year. We anticipate bringing for BLC approval on February sixth, the actual design bill company for that. So look for that to come back before the board for approval and additional consideration on February sixth, 2024.
All right. A lot of good work going on. Who are you, sir?
Hello, sir. My name is Jay Jackson with Serve, Impact, and Prosper. We have already applied, hello to the chairman and each commissioner. We have already applied for a grant through the Georgia State Department of Human Resources, and we have been approved for that grant for this exact idea. When we applied for this grant, we were planning to open a center in the City of Lovejoy. Once we got approved for the grant and found out on this past Thursday, we began to reach out to the Small Business Development Center to include the Clayton County Chamber of Commerce. And this is when we then learned that they, you all were in the process of creating an incubator center. We already have a go-to-market strategy for this particular idea. We have a business model for this idea, and we also have programming in place for a, two-six-month cohorts to be executed within the center. So something else for the board to consider.
Thank you, sir.
How much money have you received?
Twenty thousand dollars for the initial round of funding, but we have to show proof of concept to receive additional funding through our own networks of relationships and businesses that we have also acquired and grown. We will provide mentorship and funding and even a public-private partnership and things of that nature.
I do have one last question. One. COO and Ms. Rocker, this might be for you all. Have we, with opening up a, the bid, have we basically begun to look at the scope of services with what we want and how that parlay's into the build-out?
The short answer is yes. And, and the hesitation was dealing with that, some of the concepts that when Ms. Rocker knew about the grant opportunity, the scope of work, some of the, that was included in the RFP prior to actually going out. What has happened us from the programmatic side is given us context from a citizen survey perspective about, once we do the building, are the, the elements inside the building reflective of what the citizens would like to see? So, yes, sir.
Thank you. We stand adjourned. Thank you. Appreciate y'all.